Good evening, welcome to the planning board for Tuesday, May 16th. We stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, you want to be a member of this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Local, Tom Young, Chair.
Matt Schumaker, Vice Chair.
Joe Blanche, Chair, alternate.
Steve Perry, Selectman, Rat.
Kimberly Queen, in member.
Michael Crowder, Clerk.
Absence this evening is David Samuel and Tyler Perrin. Any public input this evening? Not appearing. Matt?
Alright, so we're going to continue the hearing from May 2nd for a site application by Erickson Construction at 478 Charles Bancroft Highway, Tax Map 20, Lot 21, Map 22, Lot 96, Map 21, Lot 1, property owned by Colby Litchfield LLC and Algeo Rock Limited. The applicant is proposing 15,000 square foot building for office space and storage in the northern commercial zone with future expansion of an additional 15,000 square feet. Alright, so we're going to go back to, we've already approved two of the three applications. We have one left that we're going to consider for approval tonight. The board will solicit public input after hearing from the applicant and staff, so you guys can continue with your plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening again. For the record, my name is Andy Pearlman, Attorney with Pruney and Pearlman of Nashua, and sitting at the table with me is Brian Pratt, CLD Engineering. Again, behind us are Matt Erickson Senior and Matt Erickson Junior of Erickson Construction, and most importantly is Ms. Erickson in the back of the room, who is attending her first planning board meeting today. We don't have a lot to present to you. We have submitted everything you wanted us to submit. My task was to submit the easement language, the access easement to the Colby, the remainder of the Colby parcel. Brian has submitted the plan update, and he's going to walk you through that, and we, permits are slowly coming in from the state, so we'll give you an update on that as well. And then, we think we've provided sufficient information to the board at this point to go to conditional approval. So with that, I would ask Brian to walk you through what he's done.
Great. Thanks, Andy. Again, Brian Pratt, CLD Consulting Engineers for the record. The first thing that I'm showing you is the site plan. We talked about, do we have too much parking? And the answer was, yeah, we probably had a little bit too much. So, what we did is we just added some hatching to show the 17 spaces along the left-hand side of the building to be constructed if they need them. And then, four spaces on either side of the end of that row, those also are kind of future if they need them. That leaves them 30 parking spaces, which they think is probably, you know, a few more than they actually need. They probably need 20 to 25, so should give them, you know, the flexibility to expand the parking as they need it, when they need it. The next was to add a few notes, and that was on the next page, C1B. We added a note about the 50% reduction in the impact fee for the road fees, so we added that note. We also added a note about the Green Snow Pro Certified Contractor shall apply the salt, and that's going to be a future requirement of sites in Litchfield, so we preemptively added that. The cover sheet, we added the waiver approvals on there. We added the shoreline, shoreline permit, which we have received after the meeting. So we added that approval date to the cover. And then, the plan change that I think was the most significant was the landscaping, so we had the landscape architect complete the changes, so this is sheet LS1. I'm just going to zoom in a little bit. So there's our infiltration pond on this side, left-hand side of the building. Originally, there were no shrubs here, we added all these shrubs. That should provide a good screen. We also added a four-foot panel, landscape panel between the building and the sidewalk. And that was shown on our site plan, but it hadn't made it to update on the landscape plan, so we did add that. And then, we added a note that these two trees shall be constructed in Phase 1, and this phase line shows that the rest of these trees can be constructed, the rest of the landscape can be in Phase 2. And DOT, I was meeting with them the other day for a different project, and I chatted with them, they're just backlog, so they should be getting to it within the next week or so. They did glance over it, and they didn't see any deal killers, they just physically need to get to it to write the permit. Fire Department, that was one question. We did get a approval from the Fire Department, from the Fire Chief, we forwarded that to Jen. The easement, Andy forwarded to Jen, it's in queue to be reviewed by the Town Council. The shoreline, like I said, we obtained that permit. The DES wetlands permit, we did receive one comment from the Wetlands Bureau, and that comment was to provide a letter from the abutter, because when you have a wetland impact that's less than 20 feet from an abutting property line, you need a letter from that abutter saying that they're okay with it. So, they are, we just haven't gotten them to sign the letter yet. Alteration of terrain, we did receive comments from them, I'd say about a third of them were pretty much the same comments that Lou Karen had, so we've already actually addressed about a third of their comments, and the rest of them all pretty minor, just kind of to address their checklist items. There's not going to be any visible changes to the plan, it's more just tweaking the way that we show the stormwater, and the rest of it should be, should be addressed within the next week or so. The septic system, again, we're going to wait until we have all the permits before we submit the septic system, because that literally gets approved the same day or the next day usually. And Eversource, we're still kind of working with Eversource, we haven't caught up with some of the departments, we haven't gotten anywhere yet though, so we're hopefully going to have, you know, some answer on that pretty soon. I think that's it.
I think that's it, right?
Yeah. Happy to take any more questions.
Anything from the board?
Just curious, I know last time we talked about, I don't know, on that sketch, we talked about the parking lot and plowing, and I guess you're going to have islands in your, is that, you're going to still have islands in your plow, or is that going to change?
So these end cap islands are going to stay?
The end cap.
Yep, what we were talking about was not adding, like, internal islands, like, you know, in the middle of these parking spaces, so.
Okay.
That one's still going to be there, that one's still going to be there, and then we're going to have a little concrete sidewalk bump out there, so.
Anything else? Jen, does the town, or do staff have anything?
Just a couple of updates. Let's see, let me start. Just kind of, what's changed since the last meeting that's been posted to your Google site? You have the revised set of plans that were dated on May 10th, just a quick note, make sure you have the revision date added to those. So I didn't see a new revision date.
Yeah, we'll have to add a revision date when we...
AOT comments as well.
When we do that, yeah.
Yeah.
But we have, so we, yeah, they're dated 5-2 right now.
Yeah, which was the last set.
Right.
As well.
Well, that was, these changes were made after the, based on the planning board comments on 5-2, so, but we'll update them one more time with the cover sheet.
Yeah, that's fine, I know you'll have more, and that was a comment from the AOT comments as well. The, also, the, so the quit claim deed includes the easement language. I did talk to Joan today, she did hear back from council, and council had no concerns. I haven't seen that in, in writing. So, we're hoping she'd make it back in time to be here, and was going to bring a copy of that with her. So that, but the copy of the deed is posted to the Google site as well, if you wanted to see what that language included. The comments received, that you just received last minute from AOT, I did get those up, those came in, I don't know, you sent them to me, I don't know, end of the day today.
Yeah, they came to my email at like 10:30, but I didn't see them until I got back to the office at 5:00, so.
Yeah. So those are there, there are some comments, as you noted, I went through, what was, what was suggested, mainly I was just, because, because the comments take up the better part of nearly two pages, I wanted to just go through and make sure that nothing would be substantial or affect the design. And so, most of it seemed like it was actually just looking for some clarification on their calculate, their stormwater calculations, and asking for some, some corrections to a few of the plan notes. So, what I would say is, if you are comfortable with that, that it would just be, you know, that condition of approval that says AOT permit, it would be AOT permit with all changes requested incorporated on the, on the final plans. Just to make clear that, you know, when things come in looking different than what you saw, they are, I mean, there are things that we could look and go check, check, check edits, so that, just a clarification to that condition of approval. So those, so that you have those comments there, it's, the file's 1701 NHDES AOT Request for More Info. I did post the shoreline permit copy that you sent along, so that's there. You do have posted the email from the Fire Chief that says, "We're okay." And I did even, you know, for the sake of posting everything, Lou's email from this afternoon saying he had no further comments, that's also posted. So that's something, I wasn't certain when I did my staff report at the end of last week if Lou had any more comments, so I did have a placeholder in the conditions of, draft conditions of approval for any comments from Lou, so that could be scratched. Trying to think if there was anything else that I had flagged. You know, considering we're still waiting for, from Eversource to know where the utilities are going to be, I would just simply recommend adding a condition of approval, that those utility lines will get added to the, to the plans once, once approved. That is all I had.
Great. You already said that there's...
What about the DES permit?
Which?
The shoreline or the...
Shorelands.
Wetland Bureau?
Yeah, so shoreline's been granted, and they've added the permit number to the cover sheet. Wetland, you said you just needed, the only pending item is the letter from the abutter, so there, that would have no resulting changes to the plan set. Again...
So make that a condition on...
Yeah, standard procedure for the state permits is to make them a condition of approval, because we can't hold them up for state permits. The challenge, though, is, you know, if state permit comes back with significant changes, then it could force them to come back to you with those changes.
I have the AOT comments here, I could go through these if you want, one by one, and just tell you what's going to change. Physically, you know, it's going to be very, very small changes, you wouldn't even notice. But the first one is just the snow storage, which you've already changed based on the lower Meramec River comments. Two is literally just a, it's giving them a, analyzing something a little differently just to give them, show them the information, so it's not going to change anything physically. Three, we've already addressed with Lou Karen's comment about diverting stormwater. Four, we have a logo for North American Green, it's the manufacturer that makes the erosion control netting. You know, we have a note on there that says, "No plastic netting shall be used," but North American Green supplies both plastic and coconut, so she just wants us to add more notes, that it's clear that they can't use the plastic netting. Item five is, she asked us to add another flyer for the Blandings Turtle. I added everything that Kim Tuttle from Fishing Game gave me, she didn't originally give me one, so I did request one from Kim this afternoon. Six is a typo. Seven is just removing the notes that says not for final construction, which we do at the final, the final set, we just want to make sure that the contractors aren't building off an old set, so we like to leave that note on there for most of the time. Eight is just removing some notes that aren't applicable to this project. Nine is no change, no revision required, it's a method of the way we calculated something. Ten just says, "Provide new plans," I mean, "New drainage report." Eleven is just adding items to the maintenance and inspection manual, which is included in the drainage report, which unless you went to the back of the drainage report, you probably haven't even seen that. It's just a log that they keep that shows the owners the responsibilities of how to inspect and maintain all their stormwater for the long term after construction. Twelve, just changing the length of the temporary erosion control management feature. Thirteen is just updating some notes about the means and method of construction. And fourteen is just making sure we add a revision date, so. Nothing major.
Alright, I think Jen, you already covered anything else from the other town staff. There was no additional written testimony here, right? Alright, so we'll now open the meeting up for public input, and there is none, so we will close the public input period. Does the board have anything else? Nope. Okay. We already acted on all the waivers, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so then I'll entertain a motion to approve the plan, or the application?
With conditions.
Did I miss something?
Conditions. Or you're not making it?
I think you're talking about, I think, condition, it's going to be a condition of approval, so.
Right.
We need to decide who, what conditions we're going to put into the approval before we...
Don't you do that in the motion?
Yeah, you're not actually making the motion, are you?
No.
Sorry.
I will now entertain a motion to move the process along.
I was jumping the gun.
It's okay. See, because if I didn't say that, then we would all just be sitting here still, just like we are.
That's a good point.
If you look at Jen's packet, they're all at the bottom of it.
Edit I would make is that, when you list out the state permits, including, you know, I would list out each permit, some of which are already granted, that's fine. Alteration of terrain, I would clarify that including amendments requested from DES in their May 16th letter. Including the revisions of 16, and then I would cross out the one that's any drafting or notes related edits identified by Lou Karen. I would leave the easements and legal documents are approved by council as a condition of approval, just because we haven't seen that approval, but it won't make a difference if we've already got the approval, then check.
I'm sure they can provide the documents.
Well, we've already seen, yeah, we've already seen the doc, yeah, we're just looking for councils.
Right.
Actual.
But, I mean, the planning board having the documents are at least in there. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the application as amended this evening to include conditions. One, that the landscaping that is around the two-phase, around the Phase 2 parking area to be installed at the time of Phase 2 construction, with the exception of trees, all trees to be planted at the time of Phase 1 construction. Any changes to the plan, as it stands now, will need to be returned to the board for review, should there be any changes regarding, for example, the issue of the state permit application as it applies to wetlands? That a note to the plan reserving construction of the suddenly parking spaces...
I think you're on the old version.
Am I on the old version?
I was going to say.
We've already made those.
Yeah.
I'm on the wrong version, I'm very sorry.
Sorry.
It's the Staff Review 512, 2017, toward the bottom. So if you scroll down.
Would you like a hard copy?
Might be helpful.
There you go. Actually, I'll get mine. Kind of on-the-fly edits scribbled.
Alright. Alright, I'm going to withdraw the motion that I started with, because that's not what we're discussing, so. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we withdraw the previous motion that I just made, and then if someone seconds it, and we approve it, we go and allow it, then I'll just make a new motion, so that it'll make it look...
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, conditions of approval. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the, the site plan for review for Erickson Construction with the following conditions of approval. To include planned copies with professional seals and signatures, the original Mylar with professional seals and signatures, electronic permission, submission per regulations as built, as required, all fees paid and escrows maintained as required. That, let's see, changes to plat as detailed in minutes in this report, updating the cover sheet to add state permit numbers when granted, adding the utility lines to the plans once approved by Eversource, updating the plan revision dates to reflect most recent rounds of revisions, all easements and legal documents being approved by Town Council, and copies submitted to the planning board. That all state permits are in compliance, and that the notice of intent for Department of Environmental Services be added. That, under the state...
NFTs.
I'm sorry?
NFTs.
What is that?
It's, it's the non-point discharge elimination system.
Oh, I'm sorry, non-point dis...
It's EPA, sorry.
Non-point discharge elimination system.
That's not for plan signature, though, that's, right?
That comes, that comes later, that's not a plan, that's not...
Just on the plant, yeah, when they're done. Yeah, no, 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 it's a subsequent, condition subsequent.
Alright, so we can get the plan signed without that, okay, because we don't do that until two weeks before construction.
Correct.
That's not going to be done for a little while.
No, you...
Well, it's part of the condition, so.
Yeah.
State permits, the curb cut, the subsurface septic, wetlands, dredge and fill permit, the alteration of terrain permit to include the revisions in the May 16th New Hampshire letter to DES, the shoreline protection permit. Mr. Chair, having addressed all the conditions of approval, I would ask that this board entertain a motion to accept the conditions of approval as stated.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on. Got to ask for discussion.
Discussion on the motion.
Yeah.
Well, since you offered.
I'd like to make an amendment to include the letter of the neighboring property for the wetland modification.
I guess.
That's my amendment, I need a second.
Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0-1.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, I hope everything works out smoothly for you. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you all.
5-0-1, you have a second. I was still needing a second on the original motion.
Yeah, I wasn't here. And welcome to Litchfield.
You need a second on the original motion.
Kim?
Yeah, Kim.
Kim seconded.
So all in favor of the original motion?
What are you talking about?
Just...
We just amended it.
You amended it.
Well, he actually called the... Don't vote it down now. We're good. We're good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks again, Jen.
Thank you.
Everybody knows.
You weren't here last time, I didn't get it from...
Jen?
Yes.
Just comes all of them.
I'm going to ask you, do I have permission to email him about, the information about DRED, Department of Resources Economic Development, in case they need, in case they have a loan, need a loan for the electrical line?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because we talked offline, but I, okay.
Yeah.
I'll send him an email with the information.
Thank you.
Your obligation is to be helpful.
I don't want to be helpful behind you.
Next up, the escrow release for 5557 Talent Road. Do you want me to ring on that, or just what's on the...
Just what's on the Google site, she posted the original application, and then it shows the accounting on the second page, the details, the opening balance that was placed, that was initially placed in the escrow account, interest accrued to date, as well as any charges against the account, and what the remaining balance is.
I'm reading that as $469.31.
Yes, I do believe, though, in the past, when she's asked for, when we've done a motion to release, we don't state the specific amount, we just say the remaining balance because of interest, which may adjust that final amount by a couple cents.
I make a motion to release the escrow account for 55 and 577 Talent Road to the full dollar amount of approximately $469.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Passes 6-0-0.
Who, who's, Matt, did you second?
That was me.
6-0-0?
Yep.
We're done.
We're done.
We're done. Are we?
I'll just, I'll make a quick note on Dave's behalf. So I believe David went through everybody's case studies, and sent out a list of content ideas. This is literally just a brainstormed list of things that a community's design chapter might address. It's not an outline, it's not the U List, but he wanted to put something out there to start the conversation of what should be included. So, I am assuming that were he here, he would be interested in feedback on that list. So I am assuming that were he here, he would be interested in feedback on that list.
You're referring to his brief 42-point last?
Yes. That is it.
Forty-two points?
I see 58.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I see, I see 58.
I think it's two pages.
Oh, I was looking at it in an email.
Oh, it, it grew. It's 58. He's organized it by categories. If you look at the Word file that's posted. So, yeah. So there's, there's some content ideas there. I don't know if you guys wanna wait until he's here to discuss it further?
Sure.
Perhaps as homework, everyone takes, takes a look at it. And, and maybe, maybe to help at the next meeting, if everyone went through and identified, say, 10 things that are your must-haves from the list, or five things that are your must-haves from the list? I can even put this into like a Survey Monkey, and you guys can vote on your top five or your top 10 items, and then you can have consensus at the next meeting, or lack completely thereof.
That's good.
Do you wanna do that? Okay. I just find that if you're reviewing a list in a meeting, it's dreadfully painful. So if you can, to some, some degree, kind of go through that in advance of the meeting, then it might help facilitate the conversation. Okay, so I will Survey Monkey the list. You will pick your top five, and I'll just, I don't know, we might just lump it all together as one big list of 58 things, and you just check some boxes. What, do you wanna pick 5, 10, 8, 6, 13? I don't care. Scientifically, I don't know that it matters.
I wouldn't go any more than 10.
No.
Why don't we start with 10?
All right, if we do up to. Huh?
We could always pare it down more after we.
Right. I'm just thinking of like how Survey Monkey works and kind of the, the logic behind it. I think if I say pick 10, we can restrict you to 10, so that you don't pick more than 10, but if you pick fewer than 10, I don't think it'll buzz at you. So that might work.
You're just telling you you're cheating. Just telling you you're cheating.
All right.
Minutes till May 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 2nd.
You have a second?
Yes, you do.
Any discussion?
Matt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Passes 5-0-1. Anything else? Anything else to bring up this evening? Jen?
No.
Have we heard back as to when potential landowners were coming into the planning board?
No.
No, 'cause I think we kinda pushed that off a little bit until we did a little bit, wow, wow. I know I mentioned the thing about doing the work on the community design section, 'cause it related directly to it, I thought. I know you don't like that answer, so whenever you want them to come in, it's fine.
I thought we told them to come in in June.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, and we were waiting for an answer back.
They didn't say anything tonight, so.
Maybe my memory's wrong.
No, yours is probably right.
I think we did. I talked to Joan.
Because I told the selectman about it, and I told them they should be there.
Anything else?
I will gladly.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll gladly make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Discussion?
Actually, I do, no.
I didn't get that, I didn't get that motion.
It was me then Joe.
Matt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes 6-0-0. Good night, ladies and gentlemen, and next, Nick.